Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 27th, regular meeting. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Legions and stay standing for the invocation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, open our hearts and show us purpose through your eyes. You have taught us as leaders we cannot accomplish all by ourselves. Thank you, Lord, for your wisdom and the stewardship of our community leaders who devoted hundreds of hours of their personal time in completing the 2015 general plan document. We ask for your guidance in continuing to strengthen our bridge of communication with our citizens, protect our public safety, and our troops serving throughout the world. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, what I need at this moment, I think you've all joined in on your iPads. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Councilman Stip will not be here this evening, so I need a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Stip.
Well, I hit motion.
How do you get it?
Oh, I just.
How do you get a motion when?
You're supposed to do it, but nothing's lit up.
It came up.
It's at the bottom in the corner.
Mine did.
It's clear.
So I see the motion. It's clear.
It's there.
So.
Okay.
So would I get a motion in a second? All right, let's wait for the show on the screen.
Oh, now it says motion. Okay.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne, as second by Sherri Lortano. Roll call vote, please.
It's time to start voting.
Well, I don't need a roll call.
Cast your vote.
Pardon me?
You just need to cast your vote, Mayor.
Oh, okay. All right, cast your votes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. It's hard to break old habits, you know? It just is. All right, let's go on to the communication. We have two communication items tonight. The first item is an overview of the 9/11 Memorial Pancake Breakfast held on September 14th, 2014. Darren Green, Battalion Chief, will present. Darren?
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Darren Green. I'm with United Goodyear Firefighters Charities. Today I have with me Oscar Navarro and Stephen Gilman from the United Goodyear Firefighters Charities, and I also have David Side with Goodyear Parks and Rec. Today, we're here to speak about our annual 9/11 memorial event. This is our seventh year of doing this. It's grown from 250 people on the initial one at Station 185. We basically filled up the bay, had a little memorial, we cooked some pancakes, and it was a nice event. Has since grown just a little bit. We've continued to grow each and every year. This year, being our third year now partnering as a city event, and we were able to raise over $2,000 for our charities. Approximately about 2,000 people showed up throughout the day for both the memorial breakfast and the Parks and Rec events throughout. Again, I'm going to have David go ahead and present on what Parks and Rec did, and then afterwards, we'd really like to recognize our sponsors, our major sponsors this year. This is our first-ever pancake breakfast where we had zero outlay. So it was 100% donations, and we could not do that without our sponsoring companies.
Thank you. Of course, you can do that.
David?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Although the events that lead to the recognition ceremony are very tragic, Parks and Recreation does look forward to partnering in this event for the community event following the pancake breakfast. So it gives us an opportunity to promote our programs, invite community partners such as the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club out. They actually held a hot shot contest following the pancake breakfast out on our basketball courts. We had a volunteer instructor put on a tennis clinic free and open to the public. So we just used this opportunity. We got several hundred folks in the park. We definitely wanted to bring them out to the plaza and share in all the things that Goodyear Parks and Recreation stands for. So we definitely look forward to this event, participating and supporting it, and we definitely appreciate the invitation to do, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, again, I'd like to recognize our major sponsors that help us put this together, and I can't say enough about them. Without them, we could not do this. Over the last couple of years, we've raised tens of thousands of dollars throughout these events that goes directly back into the West Valley to those in need. First, I'd like to recognize Wiggleham Resort.
Please be sure they all come up, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Starbucks, we have Jennifer Mills. We have a new addition this year, Australia Estates. We have Lee and Kathy Smith. And I didn't see a couple others, but if they're here, please come up. McLean's Distribution, Cancer Treatment Centers of America, Hickman's Eggs, Billy Gin, Sugar &amp; Spice Bakery, and of course, Hildur's Dental Group. Those are our major sponsors at most of our events, and again, we could not do this without you. We're also happy to announce this year is we were able to give away our first sponsorship into the fire service. We have a young gentleman that went through the Homeless Youth Connection, and he came from a very rough background. Not only graduated high school, completed EMT school in a Westmech program, went on to join the Army Reserve, excuse me, Army Reserve, and has come back and has expressed an interest in the fire service. So we were very fortunate in being able to help him with that dream, and he'll be our first recipient. We're paying for his hazmat school at Australia Community College this year. So that's where some of that money goes.
Stay up there a moment. All right, council comments, because I think they've made some really startling announcements tonight of their accomplishments. So Councilman Lortano.
I guess we're starting at this end. I just want to say thank you all and for participating, and this is a really great event. Not only is it great for our community to bring everyone together, it is a solemn occasion, but then I think you use it to build the community and show the strength of the community, and I think it's a great teaching tool for the young, for the young people, many of which, like my children, weren't alive on 9/11, you know, because, and it's a great teaching tool to let them know what our first responders do and how they save us and work for us every day, and how important our community is as a whole, and bringing the community together. It's just a wonderful event, so thank you all very much.
Vice Mayor, Pizzillo?
It's hard to add too much more, but Councilmember Lortano added, "We were all there, and we had a great time." You did an excellent job. I really appreciate all the community turning out for the event, and you said what, about 2,000 or so showed up, which was great, because I know the inside, where the tables were all set, was full. I mean, it wasn't an empty, empty seat inside there. So again, really appreciate the sponsorship stepping up and helping out on this, and the money that you raised going to the West Valley is great. Thank you all.
Councilman Osborne?
Sponsors, thank you very much. We appreciate you being part of our community, and it's people like you that really make us shine, and we thank you. My tears will now stop, you know, as you made me so happy with the Homeless Youth Connection, and as the vice president of that organization, it really is very special that you guys did this for him, and I really appreciate that. But, you know, quite frankly, just in general, the last, you know, quite a few years and the seven years that you've had, the 9/11 memorial and Parks and Rec has become a partner, and, you know, it's really just an outstanding time for our city to come together and show appreciation, not only for a time-honored event now, but also just for the community and for neighbors getting together and being together to pay respect to the service that you guys give to us, but then just as citizens and Americans together. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
Thank you, especially to the sponsors. We appreciate you stepping up and being such an active part of our community. You are investing in us, and we are going to invest in you, and we appreciate all that you do. Thank you so much. This charity is so important to the West Valley, and they have done such a wonderful job through the years, not only with the pancake breakfast, but with their golf tournaments and everything that they do to raise money to put back into the West Valley to those less fortunate. But we do thank you all so very much. And Darren, I want to thank your staff, everyone who has taken the time to find another way that our community can come together and reflect as one on this important day that we will never forget. And David, thank you and your wonderful Park and Rec Department for stepping up and becoming a part of this, because it is a beautiful park. It is a beautiful fire station, and it's a wonderful time to open up what we have in Goodyear to our residents, and thank you so much.
Councilman Holman?
Again, I too would like to reiterate the fact how important the sponsors are to help us make this happen. And a great deal of what we do to celebrate being in Goodyear can only happen with your help, so I thank you. And thank you to the fire department, because I think the one thing that we all said when 9/11 happened is that we would never forget, and this is part of that commitment to ourselves, as well as to our country and to our community, that we will never forget, and thank you for that.
Well, as the mayor, what more can I say? They've all said it, and I agree with them. Sponsors, thank you so much. I do think that when you give like this, it puts a tie with the city. It kind of joins hands, and you feel why you're doing this, and you're giving it to the public, and you're getting it in tribute. So there's nothing better. Our fire, thank you. You get innovative every year, do more things. I can't criticize you in any way, but I will tell you on that homeless youth, that young man, that is giant steps in helping. If you take an individual who was alone and needed help in, as the, your organization does, in educating them, but also taking them through the career path and into the service, but yet coming out, you grabbed onto them again. So that's irreplaceable. So again, thank you. Thank you for all your service, and also for the parks. It's just really nice. Everything I see coming to my desk now, it's joining of hands of the different departments putting on different things. So it's nice to see that the departments are all working together for the public and the betterment of our city. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're at 4.2. The next communication item is a presentation of the Water and Waste Digest 2014 Top Project Award. Mark Holmes, our Water Resource Manager, is our water man. He knows this subject.
Thank you, Mayor Lord. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening. If you recall, in September of 2013, came before you, and you approved a Vados injection well project. We now dub that project called VIP. This project is designed, again, to efficiently recharge our reclaimed water back in the aquifer and provide the following benefits to the city. Number one, replenish the same aquifer the city's pulling groundwater from. Also meet our state requirements for replenishment. Save, and also will save water within the long-term storage credit bank account of the city, obviously making our city more drought-proof. Improve the water quality of groundwater, a big item that we've been concerned about. Also, this project was in one of only two grants by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, their Watersmart Grant Project in the state of Arizona in 2013, and that grant was for $300,000. In July of 2014, the Water Resource Division, I'd like to point out Gretchen Irwin, our Water Resources Planning Advisor, worked very hard with our engineering firm, Brown &amp; Caldwell, in groundwater modeling, and they completed the model design and permit portion of the VIP project. The groundwater modeling was very challenging for the following reasons. Goodyear is located over a very shallow part of the aquifer. There's very little Vados zone, so recharge is very challenging. There's also two superfund sites that you're familiar with, and we also have a state water quality site as well, and they can be impacted by recharge. There are other recharge projects in the vicinity of Goodyear, Avondale, the New River and the Agua Fria River Recharge and Manage Projects. Also, we have near the river, the Buckeye Waterlogged Area, which makes recharging challenging. To ensure there were no impacts to any parties in the greatest spirit of cooperation, we partnered with the United States Bureau of Reclamation, United States Environmental Protection Agency, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, Arizona Department of Water Resources, Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company, and Crane Co., the two principal responsible parties for the superfund sites. To ensure the optimal design and configuration of our proposed project, we created the parameters that would allow the city to recharge all of its reclaimed water and not create any property or environmental harm. If possible, is there a way to benefit the remediation activities as well? Upon completion of the very challenging design, the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality signed and sent letters of support on our project. The United States Bureau of Reclamation issued its report called the Finding of No Significant Impacts, otherwise known as a Fonzie, through the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. We also received letters of support from the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company and Crane Co. In relation to the PGA North site, this project will also help with the remedy for that cleanup. In August of 2014, the Water Resource Division submitted our project design as one of the industries, to one of the industry's national journals called Water and Waste Digest for consideration in their coveted Annual Top Project Award, a national, a nationwide award program. And I am very proud to report that the city of Goodyear's VIP project was selected as one of these top projects. There were a total of 10 winners. That include the likes of San Antonio, Texas, Arlington National Cemetery, Colorado Springs, and like-sized communities, of some which projects were $800 million. And with that, I would like to present with you this, to present to you the Top Project Award. It will also be featured in their December issue of their journal. So at this time, I'd like to present the award to you, and I think Gretchen Irwin is here, who was a big, huge effort behind the hard work, the heavy lifting for this project. So Gretchen, you want to come up?
How exciting. Your good hand, yeah. Gee.
That's pretty big.
It is. Awesome.
He didn't have to water that down at all.
Not at all. Not at all.
Hey, great job. Hey, great job.
Congratulations. Good to us.
Good work.
Good for Goodyear.
Thank you for your work.
I think any time you can make headways in water and wastewater.
Oh, it's amazing.
Is amazing. And Mark, thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now is the time for citizens who I'd like to address the city council on a non-agenda item. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? All right, let's go on then to consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.6 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approve draft minutes from a regular meeting held on September 22nd, 2014. Item 6.2, approve a request from Andrea D. Lukowitz, agent applicant for RMG Goodyear LLC, doing business as Best Western Phoenix Goodyear Inn, for a new Series 11 liquor license number 110-770-43. Best Western Phoenix Goodyear Inn is located at 55 North Litchfield Road, Goodyear, Arizona. Item 6.3, reschedule the regular city council meeting normally scheduled for March 9th, 2015, to March 16th, 2015. The regular meeting normally scheduled on May 25th, 2015, to May 18th, 2015. The regular meeting normally scheduled on July 27th, 2015, to July 6th, 2015. The regular meeting normally scheduled on August 10th, 2015, to August 31st, 2015. The regular meeting normally scheduled on October 12th, 2015, to October 5th, 2015. The regular meeting normally scheduled on November 23rd, 2015, to November 16th, 2015. The regular meeting normally scheduled on December 28th, 2015, to December 7th, 2015, and to approve the 2015 city council meeting calendar. Item 6.4, adopt Resolution 14-1667, providing notice of the primary and general elections and authorizing the city clerk to enter into any agreements necessary to provide services for the March 10th, 2015, primary, and May 19th, 2015, general elections. Item 6.5, approve an extension for the Sanctuary at Cervel Village final plat approval, extending the approval date for 90 additional days to January 25th, 2015. Item 6.6, adopt Resolution 14-1671, extending the temporary suspension of provisions in the City of Goodyear Engineering Design Standards and Policies Manual, 2012 edition, that impose requirements for the installation of reclaimed water improvements, providing authorization and direction to take actions necessary to carry out intent of resolution, providing for the termination of suspension, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Does any, excuse me, does anyone from the public wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, then I got, could I please have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda? I have had a motion made by Councilman Campbell and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Open for, well, we don't have it, so please cast your vote.
Passes six-zero.
Thank you. Well, let's go right on to the business. The first item on business is a public hearing to consider the request for a use permit for the convenience use Burger King drive-through restaurant at 16364 West Yuma Road. So open for the public hearing, and Christopher Foden, architectural planner, to present.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I am not Christopher. I'm Derek Horn, your interim development services director, but I'd like to introduce Christopher. He is our new architectural planner. He's a planner on this project, and he'll give the staff presentation while I'll be here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor Lord, members of council. This is a use permit application for convenience use for a restaurant drive-through to facilitate the development of a Burger King restaurant at 16364 West Yuma Road in the Cervel Marketplace. It is located at the southwest corner of Cervel and Yuma Road, sorry, northwest corner of Cervel and Yuma Roads. The drive-through restaurant is designed and constructed in accordance with the design guidelines for the Cervel Marketplace. The application for a use permit must demonstrate the proposed use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area or the vicinity, or sorry, the property, the vicinity of the property to the neighborhood or to the public welfare. That is reasonable and that it is also reasonably compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area. Staff has reviewed the request and finds that it meets the conditions and requirements for findings for a use permit, that it satisfies the additional evaluation criteria required for convenience uses, and that the proposed use will be compatible with the existing and planned uses for Cervel Marketplace. Previously in 2009, a use permit case and a site plan was submitted by the applicant Burger King and approved by the city of Goodyear. However, since then, these approvals have expired. Mayor Lord and council members, the one difference between the development plan that was approved in 2009 and the one presented before you this evening is that the applicant has added a double queuing lane for the drive-through. This will help alleviate some staff concerns with the vehicle stacking in the queuing lane. Going back, parcel C consists of approximately 1.153 acres on Cervel Marketplace. The parcel is depicted in the aerial with the red shading. The property is Zoned C2 General Commercial. Cervel Marketplace is surrounded by residential communities. We have Curtis Commons to the north, Vanderbilt Farms to the south, Wildflower Ranch is to the east, and Canyon Trails is to the west. The conceptual development plan and conceptual building elevations for the new drive-through restaurant have been submitted as part of this use permit application. The restaurant will consist of approximately 2,800 square feet of interior space. The proposed restaurant will be required to have architectural style, building materials, and color that are consistent with the approved design guidelines for Cervel Marketplace. As you can see from the proposed conceptual elevations, the applicant and architect have designed a building with four-sided architecture that provides elevations that complement the Cervel Marketplace. We did notify the Phoenix Goodyear Airport and Luke Air Force Base, and to date, we have received no objections to the, for the base's operations will not be adversely affected. In accordance with the citizen review process, written notice was sent to residents within 500 feet of the property, and also to date, no comments or concerns have been received by staff. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the request at its regular meeting on September 17th, and again, to date, no comments or concerns were received from the public. The commission voted unanimously to approve the recommendation for approval to the council. In closing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the approval of the request for the use permit at 16364 West Yuma Road, located in the Cervel Marketplace. The development of the parcel should be in conformance with the development of the site plan dated September 17th, 2014. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions from the council, or the applicant is also available here this evening.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I please have a motion a second to approve the request for the use permit for the convenient use Burger King drive-in through, drive-through restaurant at 16364 West Yuma Road, located at the northwest corner of Cervel and Yuma Road, subject to stipulations? I need a motion and a second. I've heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Cheryl Lynn Holman. Open for council discussion. Who would like to start? Councilman Campbell?
Thank you. I'm the drive-through queen, I'll tell you. And I love Burger King. But I have a question, a couple of questions for you. What exactly are the stipulations that we're putting on to them? I've looked through your staff report, and unfortunately, I'm not quick enough to figure out exact, it's just not laid out for me. And half of it, I get like this. So I don't get the staff report. I get checkerboard.
So we need to check that out, because I had the same problem at first, and then they corrected that.
All right, thank you. Well, that's why I can't read your staff report, because it's all checkerboarded for me.
Mayor Lord, Councilman Campbell, the stipulations for the use permit would be the development of the parcel shall be in substantial conformance.
Do it, do it simple. Don't read it. Just tell me, please.
The site plan would be in conformance with the site plan that was submitted with the use permit.
Got it, okay.
And that their hours of operation would be limited to 5:00 a.m. to midnight, Sunday through Thursday.
And why are we doing that? Is it their request, or is this the city's putting a stipulation on them that they cannot be open 24 hours if they want to? And I'm sorry, because I know you're new on staff.
Yeah, it actually goes back to the past stipulation that was on the original approval for the use permit. So the original use permit, that was where the hours that were stipulated. Do you believe that is acceptable to the applicant as well?
Okay. I'm going to say something, and this is one of the things I think would be helpful on the information, because we see so many things become, we saw this, a special, they had to come before us, right, for a special permit, okay? So what happens is, we have so many things coming, we do not remember, and that's why I really wanted staff to note on these, came before council on this. And that's why I really wanted staff to note on these came before council on this date. It would be so helpful. And then, if council wants to, when they're reading their assignments, they can go check this out, because they'll know that.
Right.
I think that--
And I wasn't on council in 2009.
So it would be so helpful, because I remember that discussion, and we really controlled the time.
We still control the time, so.
Still control, but I remember that council meeting when they came, and I remember people, council declaring.
Well, my concern with the time, and it's neither, it's that, I don't know of very many 24-hour restaurants in Goodyear. I know Whataburger is one. So if we've been out late, at least we know where we can go and get food. We don't have to stop in Avondale, and we don't have to go to Watson Road in Buckeye, where everybody else is open 24 hours. And I just would like a conversation, maybe not tonight, to think about that, because I don't believe where the location of the Burger King is going to be, that it would be a detriment to the community around it, because there's not houses right there.
It's right across the street.
Well, yes, but you can still have a drive-in restaurant without lights on it. I mean, it's like Whataburger. There's houses behind Whataburger, but they don't complain. But I just think that, I don't know, I just, maybe we need to have another conversation. I'm sorry. I'm just for businesses coming into town, especially fast food restaurants, to be open all the hours they need to be open to take care of the kids that are going to football games, or the kids that have been out, and they want to come and eat, and they don't have to go to Avondale to do it. And we get the tax revenue.
Thank you, Councilman Campbell. Councilman Loritano?
Since you were reading checkerboard, I think there's something else that Councilman Campbell, I wasn't sure if she got the difference there.
No, it's all checkerboard.
On your checkerboard, it, the drive-through, and I want to make sure I've got this right, doesn't open until 7:00 a.m. So the restaurant's open at 5:00, but you're talking about the drive-through. That isn't open until 7:00.
And if I'm going to downtown Phoenix, I am on the road, if I have to be there at 8:00 o'clock, I'm on the road at 6:00, 6:30, and I'm going through a drive-through somewhere to get my coffee and my muffin.
And I will second that, because I do have to be downtown a lot at 8:00 o'clock, and I am leaving here by 6:15 to get downtown by 8:00 o'clock, so, you know, and it might be something that we do need to have the, I agree, I'd like, maybe not for this restaurant, maybe look to see how it goes with this restaurant. But in the future, I think we really need to look at that, because 7:00 is awful late to start a drive-through.
Too late for a drive-through.
Because, you know, in the winter, I'm not getting out of my car, I'm going to keep on trucking and get downtown.
Let's take it back to the podium, and I think they have a comment to make.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the City Council, you actually can alter the stipulation tonight if you would like to do that. We'd also be very happy to have the conversation about drive-through hours offline. I don't know if the applicant has any preference tonight, so, but those are our choices. We'd be happy to entertain a modification of the stipulation if you'd like to do that.
Thank you, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Let's hear from the application what their choices are.
Could the applicant talk to us? Great.
Good evening. Jeff Looker, Looker and Capella Architects, 2070 East Southern in Tempe. I'm the architect. We also have a representative from Burger King. He can introduce himself and give us contact.
My name is Shane Jacobs. I'm, I've worked for Barnett Management, they're the family that owns the Burger King, for 11 years now, and I honestly thought we could open at 5:00 a.m. So I'm surprised by that, too. That was news to me. So we would love to open at 5:00 a.m., our dining room and our drive-through.
Well, could it be a typo?
Yeah.
Maybe?
That should be correct.
Yeah, so, 5:12.
Yeah, that's--
Because you've got to open at 5:00 to get people going to work. I mean, I think--
That's what I read, is we can open both. That's fine.
Okay. Yeah, the 7:00 a.m. for the drive-through threw us a little bit, but the hours that are listed there, you're saying that that's acceptable.
I see 7:00 a.m. Did everybody understand that?
No, I don't understand.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The stipulation for the hours that are in the recommendations are acceptable to Burger King.
Well, I'm--
And the hours that are shown are 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 at midnight.
Mine says 7:00 a.m.
Mine says 5:00.
But for the drive-through, if you read on down, it's 7:00 a.m. What says 5:00?
I see hours of operation.
Somebody at the desk want to verify that?
Mine says 5:00.
There's two different numbers.
Yeah. No, Mayor, Members of the City Council, I'm reading from the staff report, the COAC, and it says the hours of operation of the proposed Burger King restaurant should be limited to the hours of 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 5:00 to 2:00 a.m., Friday through Saturday. So it says restaurant, 5:00 a.m.
Oh, that's interesting.
It says restaurant and drive-through proposed hours.
Yeah, on down here, it says the restaurant and drive-through will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and I don't want them to be--
So, so the information that we have on our iPads is not the same information?
No, it's page three.
So how do we, how do we correct that?
But the stipulations themselves say 5:00.
Madam Mayor, I think--
Excuse me, excuse me, yes.
Your recommendation at the top does state the 5:00 a.m. start time. So we'll just clarify for the record that the stipulation should read 5:00 a.m., and we'll note that in the record.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think, thank you very much for coming up and settling that. We're really pleased to have you. Thank you. And Christopher, this was your first time. Good job. I know it's always the first time coming up before council and presenting, it's not easy, so, thank you.
Mayor, I would like to make a comment.
I didn't really sure we're done.
I just, I just want to make a comment. You know, I understand we do want to be sensitive to businesses, and we do want to allow them success, but I think every time that we see these special use permits, it's because we have to look at the big picture. Right directly across the street from this Burger King is Vanderbilt Farms, an area that are rural acre homesteads. And so you have to think about the entire surrounding area of this. And so I'm sure that back in 2009, we were also looking at that as, you know, this was an area that was different. And so, you know, we have, not every drive-through restaurant is going to be the same in every vicinity, so you can't just say a blanket, you know, hours for one place over another. So I just wanted to remind you that there, there is this, you know, something about this particular spot, in that you have to be sensitive to the residents around it also, including the ones that want to leave at 5:00 in the morning to get downtown, you know. So at least we've clarified that the drive-through's open at 5:00 a.m. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Campbell?
I would like to thank the Barnett family, because they also own the Burger King that is on Pebble Creek Parkway, and I'm there four or five times a week, and I just want to thank them. They also own the Burger King that's over at Litchfield Road and Indian School, and I'm there as well. But I just thank them for their investment in our city, and we do really want to thank them very much, because that area is going to grow even more, and, and we just appreciate you putting something like Burger King out there for our residents.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, all right, please cast your vote. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to open a second public hearing to consider the approval of a special use to allow the installation of a proposed Verizon wireless communication facility to include a 70-foot-tall monopalm and support equipment on the property located 1003 North Cervel. Open public hearing, Joe Schmidt, Planning Manager, to present.
Good evening, Mayor Lord, council members. There we go. As you described, this is a special use permit for a Verizon wireless communication facility to be located on about 5 acres at the southeast corner of West Portland Drive and Cervel Avenue. As you can see in the aerial photograph, this is the subject property along the south side of Portland. There's a residence located at the front of the property, and in the surrounding area, you have the Presbyterian Church to the south, Canyon Trails residence, single-family residences to the west, the Lovantia Project to the northwest, which is under construction, and additional Canyon Trail signal family homes to the north, and large lot agricultural residential uses to the east and weight acres. The request is for the installation of a monopalm. It would be located near the center of the site, a little bit to the western half of the site. Entrance to it would be along the north side of the property, providing access to it. The leased area itself is 30 by 50, about 1,500 square feet, and within that leased area, you would have a 12 by 20-foot state-approved prefabricated structure, which would house the related equipment, surrounded by a 10-foot block wall. Yep, I lost it, there we go. A 10-foot block wall. A little challenge tonight. There we go. That's a little bit closer view of it. And it would also have a 50-kilowatt urgency generator, which would supply power to the site in the event of an outage, so to maintain service. That just depicts the antenna array. That would be situated on the monopalm, but it would be screened by palm fronds that would be attached to the structure and painted to match the same colors as the palm fronds.
Joe, I'm sorry, could you bring the mic a little closer to you? You're speaking awfully soft.
I'm sorry, my voice is hoarse for some reason, I'm trying to communicate as best I can. Well, here we go again. Here we go. Going the wrong direction now. Hmm? I don't know, I'm having a little bit of trouble. Laney, can you advance the slide? Here we go. The applicant has prepared some photo simulations of the site. You can see there's, you'll, you'll see the photo simulations from the northwest and northeast, and then directly north of the site. This is what it looks like from the northwest looking to the southeast. You can see some palm trees in, in the background, and then this is what it would look like with the monopalm installed from this view. This is looking from the northeast to the southwest, and then this is what it looks like with the monopalm in place. Then lastly, this is looking directly from the north to south, and then this is what it would look like with the monopalm in place. The applicant is also requesting a setback deviation from the zoning ordinance to facilitate the development of this wireless communication facilities. The requirement is that the pole be set back twice the height, the distance equals twice the height of the pole from the property line adjacent to residential. Since there's residential development to the north, the 140-foot setback is required, however, in order to make the 140-foot setback from the south property line, that setback would be reduced to about 83 feet. However, there's a utility easement, landscape tract, and city street right-of-way in between, so that actually the closest residential structure is over 250 feet away. So it has been recommended that the setback deviation be approved. As a result of the citizen review process, we had two individuals show up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. One cited a general concern about wireless communication facilities. The other cited, or had a question regarding sidewalks on Cervel Road, and had no objection to the wireless communication facility. Council reviewed this request at its meeting on September 17, and by a vote of 4 to 0, unanimously recommended approval, subject to the stipulations in your agenda packet. That concludes my presentation, stand ready for any questions. The applicant is here in the audience, if you have any questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience like to speak? Excuse me. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion in a second to approve the request for a special use to allow the installation of a proposed Verizon wireless communication facility to include a 70-foot-tall monopalm and support equipment on the property located at 1003 North Cervel, southeast of intersection of Portland Street and Cervel Avenue, with a waiver to allow a reduced setback of 83 feet from the north property line in lieu of a required 140-foot, subject to stipulations, excuse me. Excuse me, could I have a motion in a second, please? I've heard a motion by Councilman Holman, and a second by Councilman Loritano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Osborne?
Joe, I was going to ask, because it's been quite a while since we've seen these, and, and I have to say that when the, the monopalm idea first came about, I thought that was just ingenious. You know, it really is a nice way to, to try to hide them, and, and at least this isn't a 70-foot-tall sororo or, you know, pine tree, that really wouldn't fit. In the past, and this is a while, a ways back, so forgive me for my memory, but we've had, because of residential areas, we've had them when they were only 55 feet in height, trying to go with other, you know, foliage around there to make it look more conducive to the area. Now, you showed a picture with some palms around it. Are those, not that one? So I don't know if this is the actual--
That one.
Yeah. Are those, so are those really there? I mean, is this really, or are you just trying to show what, as an idea?
No, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, those are existing palm trees on the property.
They're there. Okay, so even at 55 feet, it would fit right, so 70-foot, I guess it's, it looks okay. That was really my only concern, was, you know, could we make it shorter if we needed to make it look, blend better? But with that picture, it looks okay, so.
I think you'd find that by making it shorter, you decrease its, its range and usability. Most of the, even the co-locations on utility poles, where they put it on top of a utility pole, the, the utility, 69 KV line utility pole is usually about 65 feet, and then you end up with it on top of that to be most useful.
Right, but, okay, I understand that, but I believe I also read that they will not be having co-locators on this pole.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, that's correct. Typically, on a monopalm design, there's not really room to put a second set of antennas, unless they use an antenna type that would somehow be camouflaged by the pineapple part of it on the bottom. We have seen that on, in some instances, but that's not necessarily useful in all applications.
Well, you know, we, we do want to try to have it where these aren't everywhere in a neighborhood, you know, so if this one is going to, well, that's just for Verizon, correct? So I don't know how this satisfies other carriers in the area, or do we already have enough close by?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, no, it does not satisfy the need for other carriers, and we may very well see additional requests. The policy decision is whether or not you want a single pole that looks like a palm tree that tries to fit in the neighborhood versus a single pole with multiple carriers on it, which is difficult to camouflage and make attractive.
Then it's the pine tree. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Loritano?
Yeah, and also, I also remember when we first saw the monoparms come, came through on planning and zoning and everything, we tried to, like, when AT&amp;T or if somebody else came, put them kind of in the same area, so we kind of have our little grouping of monoparms, per se. Do we still try to do that if another carrier comes in, kind of direct them to the same general area, so we kind of make our little monopalm grove, so they don't really look out of place?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Loritano, the way the policy works right now is if it's not camouflaged, then we try to maintain a quarter-mile separation between them, but if they're camouflaged, we certainly encourage them to be located in a similar area.
So we still do try to get those groupings?
Yes, particularly when they're monopalm design.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. Is the land leased by the resident that we see on there that sits in, in the area of that? The house that sits there?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, can you go back to where the palm is on the drawing with the-- Okay. Okay, tell me about the carport that sits there. Tell me about the carport that sits there. Does that belong to this house here?
The residence is located where it says "house," and then there's a carport in the back of the house. That's all part of the same property.
Okay. And then the next carport that I see, what's that?
That's, Mayor Lord, that's just simply a detached carport. That's part of the property.
Okay. This, this homeowner did not complain or did not have any objection?
No, this homeowner would be entering into a lease arrangement with the carrier.
That's what I thought it said in the reading, but I want to confirm that.
Yes.
And again, we didn't see anything of how it looks to where the churches are, because aren't there two churches coming really near to that, too?
We, Mayor Lord, you're right. We don't have a photo sim of what it looks from that direction. But it has maintained the one hundred and forty-foot separation from that property line. And we have not heard from any other adjoining property owners.
I'm satisfied. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, we do have two of those close to Pebble Creek, and we don't even know they're there. The palm trees, we don't even, don't even know they're there.
All right. Are you ready to cast your votes? I'll say, please cast your vote. Oh, shoot. We're having some difficulty at one of the stations.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Pazillo, would you like to give a voice vote?
Aye.
Pass a six-zero.
Thank you.
All set? Are you all set? Joe, you all right?
Yeah, I'm good. She's, she got my vote.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll go to the next item is seven point three, and this is a public hearing, so I have to call this a public hearing. And is being made, is being conducted pursuant to section one forty-seven of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended regarding a plan for the city to enter into a real estate sales contract for the alternate use of approximately eleven acres of a total site of approximately one hundred acres of bond financed property located west of Australia Parkway and south of Van Buren Street, Goodyear, Arizona, and the property by Basis School, Inc., a charter school operator designated as a five oh one C three organization. Basis will use the property for educational purposes. The property will be owned by Basis. The city may also develop the remaining property as an educational campus to be used by the government or a five oh one three C nonprofit for profit entities. And let me say this, this is only a public hearing, and no action will be taken on the item tonight. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. The hundred-acre property immediately north of the city's city center property, the city council has talked for quite some time about using that for education purposes. Higher education has been looked at with the universities and more recently also eleven acres, sale of eleven acres for the Basis schools. It would be a charter school located there. This property was acquired about ten years ago, and the source of funding when this property was acquired were general obligation bonds. Those bonds are tax-exempt, and so under the Internal Revenue Code, you have to state your purpose for tax-exempt bonds. And at the time that the bonds were issued, the assumption was that this property would be used for government purposes, in other words, our business, recreation, or so forth. However, the other use, the use that proposed under, for higher education or for the charter schools is eligible as long as it's with a five oh one C three organization. To do that, however, the city council has to hold a public hearing. And that's the purpose of the public hearing before us. Before I ask if you have any questions, I've tried to keep it simple, but if you do have questions, we also have Tim Stratton here. Tim is an attorney with Gus Rosenfeld, who is the expert on this subject. So if you need questions that delve into the Internal Revenue Code and so forth, we've got Tim here as my safety net.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone from the audience would like to speak? All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I open this up or no discussion tonight? Is this a...
It's really just a public hearing.
Okay, so...
If you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from council? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Larry. Let's go to seven point four. The item on business is to receive the fiscal year 2013-14 fourth-quarter financial report and approve the FY14 fourth-quarter budget transfers. Lori Wingenroth, Budget and Research Manager, to present. Lori?
Thank you. There's a PowerPoint there. Mayor, council, I am here to present to you the fourth-quarter financial report and to request your approval of the budget transfers at the end. This is a time of year when we're kind of stuck between three years. We're still talking to you about last year. We're talking to you about this year, and then we're talking to you about the next budget process. So I'll try to distinguish what year we're speaking about as we go forward. I did want to recognize the Budget and Research staff who have spent, who are basically responsible for this report and this presentation. Amy, John, and Tracy are in the back, and they were, they pulled this together for us. And before I move forward, I also want to let you know that these are pre-audit results for the end of the year. Not all of the year-end accounting adjustments had been done by the time we prepared this report. So later, as you see the financial report, if we report to you again on year-end results, they may look different than what we're seeing here today. So what I'll do is just give you some highlights of basically the general fund results, results in the major operating funds, the capital improvement program, and also an update on one-time supplemental progress. And then, as I mentioned at the end, we'll ask, we'll review kind of the major budget transfers that are included in this document and request your approval. I'll start with general fund revenues. General fund revenues finished in total above budget and in every line item above budget except property tax, which was a minor variation. Sales tax finished at a hundred and five percent of budget. Growth was about eight point eight percent there. Primary property tax and state shared income tax, we should always be plus or minus one percent of a hundred percent. We essentially know the base that we're applying the property tax levy to, and we know what the income tax sharing is be. So there, the variations there are due to undercollections and/or collections from prior years typically. State shared sales tax, we were very close to the actual results with our estimates. They came in at one point one percent of budget. It was about six percent growth over the prior year for state shared sales tax. Vehicle license tax is an area where historical growth rates kind of bounce around a little bit. So we projected kind of in the middle of where that bouncing around in growth rates happens. We did finish a little bit better this year at a hundred and seven percent of the budget for that particular line item. You know, as I mentioned previously, and as you well know, development-related revenues are very volatile, so we are conservative in our estimates there. Last year, we finished well above the budget. I will note that there were some expenditure increases that also went along with that increased revenue. And in fact, one of the budget transfers you'll be looking at was related to additional costs to be able to deliver those services. Other fines, user fees miscellaneous, are just numerous miscellaneous items that come in. There was a couple one-time items that were related to settlements or reimbursements that kind of pushed that up this year. They are not things that would necessarily be repeated from year to year. And so we finished at about seventy-three point six million dollars for our ongoing revenues, or about a hundred and ten percent above budget. And the construction sales tax came in at a hundred and thirty-three percent of its budget. Again, that's another area where we are cautious and conservative in preparing the estimates. So we are looking positive in terms of how we finish the year. In terms of general fund expenditures, the personal services was a down about one point two million, and that's basically cost of salaries. And that occurs because of turnover in positions. So basically, positions become vacant. It takes a little while to fill them. At the end of June, there was about fifteen positions, or there were fifteen positions vacant. In the next three categories, or the categories that remain on the page, you see numbers there that look like there were substantial savings from the budgets in terms of the percent of the budget actually spent. In all three of those categories, most of what appears to be a savings is the result of items that were carried over from fourteen into the fifteen budget. So they are items we expected we would not expend because we will actually be making those expenditures in this fiscal year fifteen. So for example, in contractual services, one point two million of the two million that we were down from budget is associated with one carryover of some job credits. And there were other carryovers as well there. Commodities, there was one carryover which is related to the web enhancements that were done at the beginning of this fiscal year. There was a lagging item to be paid there. That was almost half of what that particular category was down. And finally, in operating capital, two major carryovers accounted for most of that underage. Carrying over the funding that's available for replacing technology and carrying over the first of three years of funding to build up the amount of money we would need to buy new SCBA, BEA, equipment for the fire service. In terms of the other major funds, and these are the funds that essentially pay for operations of the city, you will see that HERF is the gas tax money. It's another shared revenue. It came on very close to budget. And I understand that it was lagging earlier in the year, but it finished strong to get, bring us up above budget. In terms of water, they also finished above budget for revenue. However, I will note that residential, commercial, and industrial uses, user fees were down from budget, and there was a one-time eight-hundred-thousand-dollar item related to the sale of some water rights that helped bring them back up above budget. That was an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar item. Wastewater is up more substantially from budget. One point three million of that, by my estimation, was due to a underestimate of what the budget should have been. We looked back historically, and it looks like there was an error in preparing the budget.
Excuse me. Vice Mayor has a question.
How's that going to impact rates kind of going forward with that nineteen percent? Are you looking at any downward adjustment, or are you looking? Let me ask you. What are we going to do with that additional money there?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that budget has been corrected in this year's, if you look at this year's revenue budget, it has already been reflected that that was an error in the prior year. So in terms of that, it's, we won't have this kinds of savings or this kind of additional revenue this year or moving forward. The actual additional revenues that came in will fall to the fund balance and will be available when we do the next forecast for any of these funds, and we look at what their resources are and what the needed expenditures are. That will go into making that calculation and looking at what, how we will deal with the fund in the future.
As if I recall the earlier presentation on the revenues, there was a built-in potential increase, and was it wastewater or was wastewater or not? Refresh me.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we've built in the potential for rate increases in both water and wastewater. Again, it was a placeholder, not based on a known need at this point in time.
So we may look a little further into wastewater as we go forward. Is that, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Correct.
Okay.
Just agreeing with, agreeing with Joe. What's going on?
The, and wastewater also had a one-time, one-time payment from a large customer that also upped their revenue last year. That will not be repeated. In sanitation, revenue was up almost three hundred thousand dollars. That is associated with more, more accounts served than was anticipated in the budget. That was partially offset by increased expenditures related to serving those customers. And the stadium finished well with its revenues. The increase is primarily related to non-spring training activities. Those were also partially offset by cost increases. In terms of the expenditures in the major operating funds, one of the first things you might notice is that HERF's expenditures are higher than HERF's revenues, and that's because that program is supported by general funds, and that's the other funding source that goes in to cover those expenditures. There was a carryover, excuse me, in this program. Both water and wastewater also came in under, and again, their underages are related to personal services savings in terms of vacancies and turnover and due to some of the carryovers that we've either talked about or that are present in there, that were carried over from fourteen into fifteen. Sanitation on this chart appears that it will be over budget. We can't be in that situation. So we did review the year-end adjustments that were still pending when this report was prepared, and they will be under budget. There are some needs to adjust personal services at year-end based on when we get paid versus when the cost has to be recognized. So their, their year-end results, actuals, will be lower. We are also requesting a very small, less than ten thousand dollar budget transfer in sanitation. And if you'll remember, revenues were up and expenditures related to the contract were up as well, and so that's why that small adjustment will be required. And then finally, stadium performed very well relative to their budget. They deal with challenges associated with utility costs and absorb that and kept in line. And we're also able to cover some of those costs associated with additional events. And they also completed their, the expenditures for their one-time supplemental for rolling stock and those types of things. So they, they came very close to their budget.
Vice Mayor?
Just real quick on the stadium, and I'm not sure, you may know, but that water line that's going to take that, what is it, the water from, what is it, the Goodyear Rubber Company, is that line almost done or where it's going to help offset our utility costs? Is it? It's in service now, so that's going to, should bring down some of our utility costs as we move forward, correct? All right. That's great. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor and Vice Mayor, we did include a one-time supplemental in this year's budget for the stadium to deal with the increased utility costs with the intent of monitoring the impact of that project.
And again, that, to me, that's a great project because water is one of your largest cost factors associated with the ballpark, and the fact that we're getting that water at what, zero, if I'm not mistaken? Yes, that's what I like about it. And it's going to save us, what, three hundred thousand a year? Two? Two hundred thousand? Okay. That's still, it's a nice number.
Next, we'll move on to the capital improvement plan. This is another area where when you look at a budget of three, of thirty-seven million dollars and you look at fourth quarter expenditures for the fourth quarter at eleven point two, it appears that we are not spending the funds the way we should be. I will remind you that capital projects often span multiple years. You award a contract in one year, but it may take two years for that contractor to finish the work and us to pay that out. There's also cases where we are building up budget capacity by planning for a project in advance and funding money up ahead for a few years. That, that impacts, we can't spend it till we have all the funds that are available. And then there's projects that are finishing very near year-end, but that would have lagging costs that need to be addressed in the next year. So when we adjust, when we look at what was carried over from fourteen into fifteen, that was twenty-five point one million dollars in projects of that nature. And to give you an idea of the kinds of things that were carried over, one was the stadium infrastructure funds for the Bullard Avenue improvements. That project's designed, and I believe if you haven't awarded the contract already, that will be happening shortly, so that project is moving forward at this point in time. The Public Works Fleet Management Facility is another. That, that facility, they moved into that in July, I believe. So that's complete. This was just a cost to finish the project. The Goodyear Boulevard Project is moving forward this year. Water recharge system, police, fire facilities are all other examples of carryovers that are moving forward in future in this year. There were a number of one-time supplementals that we've been monitoring and reporting to you on throughout the year. Most of those projects did get completed. A few items did carry over. One of... One of, and some of these you've already heard mentioned, they're the carryovers for things like the IT hardware, the breathing equipment, City Hall signage, which is a project that's moving forward now, some permit fees for various projects in wastewater, and then the funds for the utility rate study as well. So those are just examples of some of those items. But essentially, most of the items are complete. And there's a full listing of the one-time supplementals in the report. Last piece of this is the budget transfers. And to remind everybody, the reason we need budget transfers is sometimes we get new resources, like grants or reimbursements. We sometimes expend funds in a different place than we budgeted them. So we have to move the budget to where we actually make the expenditure. And sometimes there are unexpected costs. When we make budget transfers, we do not change the bottom line of the city's budget. We can't, we are not able to do that. We have to move the authority around between already budgeted areas. And so what's presented to you today are a number of items to finish out the year. The major items that are included are, there's $175,000 transfer related to the capital projects program at the stadium. Those projects have to be approved by the two teams, and they're usually not resolved before the budget is adopted. So we have to address them as the teams approve those items. The funds are available. They just needed to be made available from appropriation perspective. There were, Fire and Police had expenditures of Personal Services related to providing services during spring training at the ballpark. We're moving those costs from Police and Fire to the ballpark. The good news of having more sales tax revenue than we budgeted is that, on the other side, there are some agreements that we have in terms of development agreements or other types of agreements that are based on this. We make our repayments based on the sales taxes we actually receive. So there's a $550,000 transfer that's related to putting the, paying those, those extra sales taxes we collected to the entities that we have agreements with. There are two items associated with the Police Evidence Facility. Last year, you approved basically a timing change in the Goodyear Boulevard Project where we gave the capacity from the Goodyear Boulevard Project to the Police Project. Then this year, we flipped those around. The Police Project returned that authority to the Goodyear Boulevard Project. So that's $332,000. You see that same item on the, on the transfers again because the project was moved to a structure that would be easier for the Engineering Department to manage the project. So it was initially put in Police and then moved to Engineering. So unfortunately, you see that item twice, but it is for two different reasons. There are numerous grants that were received and insurance reimbursements that are, where we have new resources that we are then adding the budget to cover the expenditures that happened as a result of those grants or the reason we're being reimbursed for insurance. And the last item in the report, which is on pages 32 and 33, is a transfer related to some year-end corrections. Most of those are kind of the sanitation that I mentioned earlier where we had a slight increase and, where we had an increase in cost offset by an increase in revenue. Some of them are related to matching the best impact fee to use for a particular project with that project. So they're, because we do have, you know, two police impact fees. And sometimes it's better to use one fund over the, over the other. And so we made decisions to match the best use of impact fees with the projects at hand. And then there are several of the transfers that are related to changes or in how debt is paid. And these are those cases where we may have budgeted something to be paid out of one fund, but ultimately decided that it should be better charged to a different fund. And we transferred the resources from the fund where the, where the item was originally budgeted to the fund where we ultimately paid that. And there are several of those items that are related to debt on this list. And with that, I would entertain any questions and request that the council approve the budget transfers as presented in the report.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Could I then have a motion and a second to recede the fiscal year 2013-14 fourth quarter financial report and approve the FY14 fourth quarter budget transfer? I see a motion by Councilman Laura Tano and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
Just a general comment. I appreciate the thoroughness of the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, and I've had my questions answered. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Then, Council, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, please cast your votes.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Let's go to 7.5 to consider approving expenditures of $101,000 to repair and replace the boiler systems at the ballpark, Indians Development Complex and Reds Development Complex. Bruce Kessman and Mark Flynn to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to seek the approval, council's approval, to expend $101,000 out of the capital replacement account to make the necessary repairs to the boiler system that is located in the ballpark and both development complexes. There is some history that revolves around the boiler systems. We've been working closely with Mark Flynn and the Municipal Services Department to help us identify the source of the problem and also come up with solutions, which Mark will be presenting to you here.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to visit with you this evening. I want to provide a little bit of background about some of the concerns and the experiences that we've had at the ballpark. Try to field any questions you may have about those and then recommend to you how we're feeling it's best for us to proceed. The development complexes at the ballpark were built in two phases. The Indians Complex and the ballpark were constructed through 2007 for an opening in 2008. The Reds Facility, the development complex for the Reds, followed about a year later in 2008. We began identifying some discoloration in the water in the terminal fixtures, showers, sinks, in some of the therapy equipment that the teams were using. We were seeing some discoloration in the water and actually, in some cases, a little bit of sediment in some of those components. First began to identify this occurring in the Indians Development Complex. And then in 2011, we began seeing that in the Reds Complex as well. So about two years after the initial inception of systems coming online in those facilities, we were beginning to experience some breakdown and some corrosion in the interior components of those systems. We continued to perform routine maintenance on those systems. We flushed those systems and then provide some ongoing maintenance to the teams, and then we've responded in those instances where they have expressed concerns to us and then tried to track backwards to see what some of those problems may be. The photographs that you see before you right here represent some destructive testing, for lack of a better term. With the removal of one of the heating modules, this is a Durashield module that's actually the heating element that sits inside the bundle. We're able to remove that and replace it with an updated component. But you're able to see there where we're seeing the rust and corrosion occurring on the unit itself. We weren't able to ever definitively identify what the cause of that was. So we continued our investigation while we continued to see corrosion occurring in both development complexes, Indians and Reds. And then we also began to see some of the corrosion occurring in the ballpark as well. Timeline from what we had put together, the Durashield module was the original heating module. That's the type of unit that was actually inside each of the heating systems in the development complexes and at the ballpark. This was the original equipment provided to us by the manufacturer, PVI Boiler Systems. We replaced in November of 2013 at the recommendation of PVI. We converted the Durashield unit to an updated model, a heating module that they recommended. It's referred to as an Aquaplex module. This is a coated module. It's intended to deal with the types of water conditions that we experience in the, in the valley of, in the Phoenix Valley, but also here in the Southwest Valley. High volumes of salts in the water, very hard water components that many people see in just general operation of their mechanical equipment. In February of 2014, we had a similar failure, similar experience in the Reds Development Complex. Heating module replaced there as well with an Aquaplex unit. We were able to make that exchange occur and put the Aquaplex unit in place. After the spring training season, 2000, in May of 2014, we actually took them apart to inspect them. We wanted to see how these were performing, what kind of condition we were, what kind of conditions we were seeing on the actual units themselves and to find out if the Aquaplex unit was actually performing as it had been described to us by the manufacturer. In 2000, June of 2014, we did the same inspection on the Aquaplex bundle that was located at the ballpark to actually do some comparison between the two units. And then in August of 14, 2014, we actually retained a water, a water quality consultant to help us evaluate some of the things we're experiencing and help guide us in how to make some corrective actions that would allow us to move forward without continuing to experience the corrosion. What we found out was that the water testing that was performed on the, the systems, both entry water into the system as well as the water being delivered into the terminal fixtures of the facility, we received a report that indicated that we were seeing water conditions very typical to the, to the valley. The bundles that we inspected, those modules that were removed, you could see the heavy pitting and the corrosion that was occurring. That corrosion was, was causing some acceleration to the deterioration. We were seeing high volumes of dissolved oxygen in the water. And that contributed to some of the excessive pitting and the corrosion you saw. That led to the rust and in some cases, some of the physical material in the water. The breakdown that was occurring, we were not seeing that in the Aquaplex units that had been recommended to us by the manufacturer. The Aquaplex version, the higher coated finish, they allowed to work with the temperatures they're experiencing that and also with the long-term periods where there is inactivity in those units, the Aquaplex units seem to be helping us towards preventing that corrosion from occurring. As a result, our recommendation, after the review with a water consultant, was to look at utilizing some of the existing equipment that we have within the ballpark and the development complexes. We want to take advantage of where we have those Aquaplex units in place and try to make those financial investments work to our advantage. But at the same time, we want to remove those older units, those Durashield units that were part of the original equipment. Our desire is to remove those from the system so that we can eliminate the points where that corrosion is occurring. So as a result, we're recommending that we convert the ballpark, where an Aquaplex unit is in place, to a tankless water heating system. It's relatively new technology and a commercial application. But the information that we've seen thus far from the manufacturers, as well as from some European markets where the technology is a little bit more widely applied, has been very positive thus far. The other thought is to reconfigure the hot water systems at both the development complexes. Right now, the systems that exist in the Indians Complex and the Reds Complex are not quite mirror images of one another. We have heating units of one size, the burner units are of a certain size, and the tank units are of a different size. Our thought is to balance those so that we have a large and a small unit in each complex that would allow us to operate only what we need for that operation to run whatever the load is for the ballpark or the development complex at a specific point in time. The idea being that we can minimize water consumption, the amount of water or heating when there's low use in the facility, but also minimize the amount of natural gas that we're consuming by only heating the amount of water necessary for a specific need. The other component of the project would be that all four tanks in the development complexes would be recoded. We would actually recoat the interior of the tanks to a high-temperature liner that would allow us to remove any corrosion or any pitting that was occurring in those tanks, refinish those so that we're kind of starting with the tanks as new as possible as well. And then the last component of the project would be that we would upgrade the water softening system in the Indians Development Complex to a higher-grade unit, which would allow us to be on par with what we've done at the Indians Complex. The recommendations from the water consultant were for us to continue with softened water within the system and for us to minimize by either means of higher-grade steels where water is going to come in contact with the heating modules or the use of the coated Aquaplex components. Those were the recommendations from the water consultant. We've tried to apply those where we minimize what our expenditures are but allow us to move forward in a manner where we think we're in the best, best possible effort to protect the systems that are providing service to the teams in those respective areas. The fiscal analysis, that $101,000 request came about as a result of the cost to purchase two additional Aquaplex heating modules, recoat the interior of the four tanks that would be used, two in the Indians Complex, two in the Reds Complex, but then to also replace that water softening system in the Reds, excuse me, in the Indians Facility so that we're back to a kind of a commonality amongst, amongst both development complexes. The entire estimated cost for this right now is $101,000. And with January 15 as our deadline for completion of this work, so we're ahead of the spring training season, we still have the ability to meet those deadlines based upon the information we received from PVI, the manufacturer of this Aquaplex product, and their local representative, the firm we've been working with locally, to facilitate the installation. We expect that we'd have materials on site approximately mid-December and be able to complete prior to the end of the calendar year or certainly end of the first week of January. Happy to answer any questions that you may have or try to field any issues or concerns that may come up in discussion.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have a motion and a second to approve the expenditures of $101,000 to repair and replace the boiler systems at the ballpark, the Indians Development Complex and the Reds Development Complex? I have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Laura Tano. Open for council discussion. Who'd like to be first? Councilman Laura Tano.
I just have a question. Because obviously, you know, we all know what the water is like in Arizona. So it sounds like it's just eating through. With the coated system, the newer system, is there any warranty on that? Or did the other system have any warranty issues that we could defray any of the costs or?
There is, there is a warranty on the original system. And what we had done is the first time that we replaced a Durashield bundle, we replaced it with a Durashield bundle. That material was provided to us at no cost by the manufacturer. We expressed concern about what we defined as premature failure. The systems had deteriorated much in advance of what we thought they should have. And they really couldn't explain to us why. So they provided us that unit at no cost. We were responsible to remove the old and install the new. But in this Aquaplex product, as they've advanced in their technology and had similar experiences with other clients, there is a five-year period where any corrosion or pitting that occurs is covered 100%. And then it's on a deep, a descending scale, I believe, over the next 10 or 15 years.
This is the new one, though.
The Aquaplex product. These would be the coated modules that are used to actually heat the water.
The lifespan is around 10 to 15 years, actually.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm seeking. I expect equipment of this nature to be providing a service into the 10, 15-year life cycle.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Vice Mayor?
I'm good.
You're good, all right. Councilman Osborne?
You know, it occurs to me that, over the years, we've heard a lot of different residents complaining about breakdown and failure of certain items in their, in their home because of the water systems or because of softeners, this and that. It's kind of interesting that this type of situation hasn't happened in some other company that may be located in Goodyear for the same type of issue, this type of our water. And, and I just, I wonder, going forward, that when we have different companies that come to Goodyear or different developments, that we, we finally realize that, you know what? These aren't good products for Arizona water and what our water has to go through. And so maybe this is something that we take note of, that this kind of system isn't good for, you know, because I'm sure there's going to be other companies that are going to have to have boilers or hot water heaters or things like that within our city. to have boilers or hot water heaters or things like that within our city. And so we should really take note to help our other companies that want to come here to not have the same situation that we're finding right now. I just want to make that point.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. I think it's going to take a little bit of thought about how to apply that and be able to make those recommendations.
Sure, sure, but as suggestion-wise, yeah.
Certainly, from our perspective on the facility side of the equation, there are things that we're looking at, the experiences that we've had at the development complexes and at the ballpark. How can I apply those to a police facility or to City Hall or to a fire station or something of that nature? I think what we're seeing in these units is the components that were utilized. I think it's the quality of the steel, you know, by changing to the Aquaplex product, it's a much denser steel, it's a coated component, so you're minimizing the impact of the water actually getting to those milder steel components. So those are things we're beginning to look at in other systems as well. Obviously, the ballpark is a huge amount of, it's a huge water consumer on the potable side of the equation. We go through a lot of water for cooking and cleaning and laundry and all those kinds of things. Don't have that kind of volume in a City Hall or in some of those other facilities, but there are things we certainly want to take note of and try to find ways to apply some of those same technologies.
Right, right. Well, and I thank you for Councilman Loretano's question, because that was also on my mind. Was there any, anything we can get back out of the other person? Thank you.
We've had some very terse conversations with the vendor.
Well, it seems to me that we're very patient, because they've had this problem for quite some time.
I think, based on feedback that we're getting and talking to some of our constituents around the valley, there's another major sporting facility that's utilizing PVI products as well. They've had the Aquaplex modules in place since 2013 with very good success. That is actually what kind of helped us stay in contact with the vendor to say, not throw out the baby in the bathwater, so to speak. We felt they were very, very responsive, and they were evolving and trying to come up with a solution. I think that's where this Aquaplex product has come from. It's been there, advancing their technology and their understanding, and then trying to be responsive to us as an end consumer. I don't know that it's ever as much as I'd like.
Any other questions, Congressman Campbell?
Is it the same company that sold us the DuraShield boiler you're going to deal with to get the tankless?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, I was going to say, I don't have a lot of confidence in the original folks that put a boiler in that component, and here it is, not even 10 years, and we're having to replace it.
Congressman Campbell, I certainly understand the challenge, but the use of a tankless system in the ballpark would involve kind of a change in the technology.
Oh, I know that. I have a tankless at home. I understand it. But what I'm saying is, I don't have too much confidence in the one company that was the original company that did the DuraShield, and then we had to change it to an Aquaplex, and now we're hoping the Aquaplex works, but we're using city water, right?
It will still be city water.
It's our water. Will our water be softer because we're going to be using reclaimed water? Or are we still going to have those harsh?
We will continue to soften the water that we're utilizing in the ballpark.
Well, maybe we need to soften it even more to save money.
And that's a piece that we looked at when we were evaluating the actual water quality reports that we received from the water consultant. We began looking at whether we could increase the level of softness within that system and see what that implication may be. The balance is, is that, in some cases, when we're softening water, you may also be adding salt into the water, which also is corrosive. So you have to find that balance point.
Sure, but we have to take care of the Reds and the Indians.
By all means.
Absolutely, because we can't, they're not going to be happy with this sediment and this type of water.
I understand fully.
Whatever it takes.
I've been in a couple of meetings where they've been very patient, but they're also making it very clear, they'd like us to come up with some solutions.
I can imagine. So I hope this solution works.
As do I, ma'am. I think we're, I believe we're on the right track. I think from our review, some third-party review, as well as the homework we've done with some of our constituents in the Southwest Valley, problems that we're seeing with other, you know, major consumers of water who are dealing with water conditions, I think we're on the right track.
Any other questions?
I have one quick question.
Yes, Councilman Loretano.
And I might have missed this. Will this be done by spring training? Will it be up in good?
Given the approval this evening, our timing is that we will be done prior to spring training. That's correct.
Well, then, let's cast those votes.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation. All right, we're down at 7.6. On the business is to consider a notice of intent to enter a Second Amendment to the Retail Development Tax Incentive Agreement with Westcore Goodyear LLC and Globe Land Investors LLC. Kim Bradford, interim Economic Development Manager, to present. Kim?
Just a moment. I believe I need to recuse myself from this discussion, and I'll be leaving the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Osborne, because of a conflict of interest business, she is going to remove herself from the dais into a separate room.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am happy to be before you this evening to present on the notice of intent to enter into a Second Amendment to the Westcore Development Agreement. My presentation this evening will include a brief background of the original agreement and amendment that we have entered into previously, as well as a high-level overview of the main terms of the Second Amendment agreement. I do want to point out that tonight's action is the first of two steps in order to actually consider the agreement. We do have this notice of intent, and then council will actually receive the full presentation and have discussion on the terms of the Second Amendment at its November 17 council meeting. In terms of the original development agreement, the city and Westcore, which is also now known as Mace Ridge, entered into the original development agreement on September 11, 2006. And in that agreement, it defined minimum retail improvements that would be included for the Astraia Falls Regional Mall. That does include two anchor stores and 300,000 square feet of inline retail that would support that project, and the original completion date was anticipated to be December of 2012. In correlation with that development agreement, the city also worked to form the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. And you see on the screen there a map that outlines the boundaries for that improvement district, and that dark black outline is the full area where public infrastructure was completed in order to make sure that the infrastructure was in place when the project was ready to move forward. And so not only does that include all the roadways inside those black boundaries, but it also fully improved the Bullard Wash Park, which is about 30 acres of park space that's now owned and enjoyed by the city between McDowell Road and Virginia Avenue. As part of the mechanism for paying for the improvement district, the city did sell improvement district bonds and Westcore, now Mace Ridge, they make the payments on those assessments each year. And in the original development agreement, in order to have a mechanism for the city to reimburse those payments for the public infrastructure, we do have a 50% sales tax reimbursement for the sales tax that's generated by the project, and that's what necessitates the two-step process in order to consider an amendment to the development agreement. Westcore remains committed to completing the Astraia Falls Regional Mall project, and we have continued to work closely with them, actually since 2006, when the agreement was originally put in place. And as you've heard over the years, that really the driver of the timing for opening the mall is the anchor stores that are included in this project. And so back in December of 2009, we did enter into a First Amendment to this development agreement, which included two provisions for extending that timeframe for completing the minimum retail improvements. They were associated with prepayment of specific fees, and so we had a prepayment of permit fees that was $1.3 million, which was paid by Westcore, which gave an extension date for the minimum retail improvements to December of 2014. And as we have approached that second extension deadline, which is a prepayment of $1.25 million in development fees to extend the completion date to 2016, it has become evident that we need to discuss what would a Second Amendment provision look like, because those anchor stores are not ready to move forward, and we would not be able to meet those minimum retail improvements by 2016. There are some elements that we've been discussing of how can we move some of those particular elements of the project forward, and so cooperatively, we have been working together to identify what those components look like. And as I said, because the commitment is there to actually realize the full vision of the project in the future. So here we have the high-level elements of the actual Second Amendment, which will be fully discussed by the council at the November 17 council meeting. And you'll see that we are proposing to move forward the mall project in two phases. And so Phase One would begin to move forward immediately upon approval of the Second Amendment, and that would include completion of a movie theater of not less than 12 screens, as well as two adjacent pad-ready sites, as we call them, so adjacent parcels that would be ready to support retail and entertainment uses that we would expect to see move forward at the time the theater moves forward as well. It does include other provisions, such as the city and Mace Ridge continuing to work together cooperatively to market those pad sites, as well as providing updates to the council at regular intervals, as well as the citizens. Upon meeting those requirements for Phase One and having those elements operational by December 2016, if those are completed, then the full minimum retail improvements, as I just described in the original agreement, would have an additional five years to be completed, which would take that out to December 2021. The amendment does not contemplate changing any of the other original points in the agreement and does not change the foundation for that sales tax reimbursement structure. I did want to highlight just some of those points that are in the original agreement that remain intact, and that does include, at the developer's discretion, when the project moves forward, that they would have the ability to fund both plan review and inspection staff. If they would like to have those staff dedicated to their project, they would fund that, as well as some contributions to public safety needs that would arise with the completion of the project, which includes funding police staff initially and also providing a substation within the mall project. Also, some community amenities, including a community room that would be accessible to the public, as well as a city information kiosk. And of course, throughout all of this, they would continue making their assessment payments on those improvement district bonds, which they are making today and have been since that project was completed in 2009, and that's about $3.3 million per year. So in summary, it's our recommendation that council adopt Resolution 14-1669, which provides notice of intent to enter into the Second Amendment of the Westcore Development Agreement. This agreement in substantial form of the council will consider on November 17 is on file at the city clerk's office and open for public review. And as I mentioned, this is required two-step process per the state law, and so council will have a presentation and full discussion on the terms proposed in the amendment at the November 17 city council meeting. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Kim, for your presentation. I see that I do have one speaker. I am going to invite back to the dais Mark Pelletier. You just repeat your name and address, and Mark, you do know, but for the public, I have to repeat this. You'll be limited to three minutes. The yellow light and buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. And before you speak, please identify yourself clearly, stating for the record your name and address.
Thank you, Mary and Council. My name is Mark Pelletier. I live at 15742 West Fairmount in Goodyear. I'd like, if possible, to use the projector toward the end of my talk. And I do have to admit that, as long as I've been following this, there's still many aspects of it that even after Ms. Bradford talked about it, I don't understand. But I realize this is an intent only and not the final vote, but I am here in opposition, at least to my understanding, of an aspect of this. And if my understanding is wrong, I'm fully willing to be corrected. And that specifically is the continuance of sales tax rebates under the second adjustment. And it's my understanding, but I may be incorrect, that those sales tax rebates accrue to the developer. And it's on that basis that I would hope reconsideration would be given to this. This amendment is indeed necessary because of a second failure on the part of the developer to meet the requirements necessary for those sales tax rebates. Now, it is said the economy's bad, and that's why things, the mall hasn't been built. Well, I grant that, but the economy's been bad for the city and the taxpayers, too. The streets are in, the streetlights are in, the I-10 interchanges are in, the county has put electronic warning sites on McDowell Road to control the traffic that's going to be there. The city has done its part of the commitments. I get it that the economics have not and still do not allow the mall to be built. What I don't get is, what appears to me, the intention to continue to allow and offer incentives that, over the course of eight years, haven't incentivized anything and haven't been earned, as stipulated in the original agreement and the First Amendment. Sure, let's do this amendment and change the dates and get this built in phases as we can, and let's certainly meet our commitments for sales tax rebates for any construction through 2016. Councilmember Campbell told us she cajoled, maybe even begged, the developer to put a sign up. I don't know how this works. Here's that sign today. It's laying in the dirt, and not just since the recent storms, but for months. Now, you'd tell me I was out of pace if I were to stand here and tell you that that demonstrates the commitment that the builder says they have. And I say it's equally incorrect to continue to offer rebates for nonperformance, no matter how understandable the reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. All right, would the city, are there any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution 14-1669 by title only?
Adopt Resolution 14-1669, adopting a notice of intent to enter into a Second Amendment to the Retail Development Incentive Agreement with Westcore Goodyear LLC and Globe Land Investors LLC for the construction of a regional shopping mall on the northwest corner of McDowell Road and Bullard Avenue.
Thank you. Could I have a motion a second, please? I see a motion by Councilman Holman in a second. We have no second. Well, I can't, I have a motion. Can I hit motion again, then? All right, can I just, can I just ask for a second verbally? I'm asking for a verbal second. All right, Councilman, I mean, Vice Mayor Bazillo did a second. Thank you very much for coming through with that. Open for council discussion. Who'd like to be first?
Oh, shucks. Okay.
Councilman Loretano.
Before, do you, some of the issues that were just brought up with regard to the sales tax reimbursement, could we have a short presentation before I make any comments or anyone on what that is?
Would you like to call up city manager? Kim? All right.
Mayor, council, I can start off by making some remarks that may clarify what the provision allows for. The 50% sales tax reimbursement in there is specifically tied to the revenues that are generated by the project itself. And so, right now, the reimbursements that are being received are directly tied to the revenue from the Astraia Falls Market Power Center. And so we are not giving any additional reimbursements that are above and beyond the revenue generated by that project, which is in that identified area in the improvement district. I can't go back. And so any additional reimbursement for the public infrastructure, which is the city's responsibility or would have been, and it's basically being paid for upfront by Westcore, Mace Ridge now, and the continued reimbursement of that would be tied directly to the revenues generated by the mall when it is built. And so those revenues and reimbursements are directly correlated to performance of building the project out.
Does that help you, Councilman Loretano?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of clarify, because that it's understood that they're not getting the mall reimbursements now just for the power center. I think there is some issue there. I do want to be that clear, because it doesn't sound fair.
No, but there's nothing there for them to get.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to be clear, Hefstadt.
It's just the power center, those businesses that are in producing revenue, those are it.
And can I finish?
Yes, go ahead.
I agree, I understand, and I'm glad our citizens, and I've heard this from not just Mr. Pelletier, but lots of citizens, when I've been talking to them, they understand the economy, and they understand this is not the city's fault. And I know our city staff has given, sent to retail coach, we've had presentations, we've sent information on our demographics, our growth, our income, to try to show people that we are ready to support. I think we have to look at the wider economy, and it's pretty much agreed that, right now, it's not really a fault issue. And I think, rather than blame fault, I'm glad that we're doing a phasing and a positive way to get some entertainment and some restaurants for our citizens right now. I think that's a very positive thing that we're doing, because if we look right now, that malls aren't being built left and right. I'd have a whole different, if we saw malls going up in other cities, I think I'd look at it a little bit differently, but I do understand this does come down to the anchors, and when they feel comfortable with the economy, there's been a change in the whole way people shop in the last 10 years, too. A lot more people do it online than have done it in the past. So I'm very happy that we're going to get a hearkened, should I have said the name? A major theater. One of the major theaters.
Hey, you did.
A major theater here, and I'm really glad that we're going to have some restaurants and have activities. That is what our citizens have been acting. And my understanding is the mall can come earlier if the economy picks up earlier.
Exactly. I was going to say that. Any other comments here? Yes, Congressman Campbell?
Well, I have to comment on the sign, because yes, I did want to sign. I'm a firm believer that when I see a vacant lot with dirt, I want to know what's going on there. And I just thought that, in the interest of everyone's curiosity, that they would know that that was the mall area. And I was heartbroken when I saw the sign, because it was so puny compared to the sign I envisioned. I envisioned to be put there, similar to Prisada. Is it Prisada? Yes, it's Prisada. And then, when the storm came and blew it down, I was even more distraught, and I called the city manager and said, "Our sign is in the mud." And so, yes, I did ask for a sign because I thought that would be a great way to show our residents that a mall is going to go there someday. And we have a lot of new people that are coming into our community that aren't necessarily familiar with that location. But the economy is bad. I'm thrilled that we're going to build in spurts and whatever it takes, whatever it takes to get that mall developed. Because once it is developed, it's going to be very, very successful, and everyone's going to be happy because we really want it. So thanks, Kim.
Any comments from council? Vice Mayor?
Just a general, when the full presentation is given in the 17th, we talk about the public infrastructure and what is actually, would have been owed by us to begin with. Might want to go into a little more detail on that and the fact that the developer put all that in, and they're paying for it right now with that 3.3. But that's money we owe. I mean, that's, that's infrastructure, and they're paying for it. And the only way they get reimbursed is sales tax generated within the Improvement District because they're taxing themselves as a result of making those improvements. So I think as you kind of go through that explanation, it's not something they're not getting for, something that we would have normally paid for on those improvements. This is a way of funding it as opposed to on the city's dime, if the city would have had to put that up front. So I think in the full presentation, a little more expansion, expanding that concept, and I think would be helpful to the public when we get to that point. But I'll hold comments until we do that because this is just the intent. We're still going to have the discussion on the 17th.
Well, I guess everybody's done. I'm just going, do you have something to say? I'm going to speak my piece. It's a relief to me, and I know to the council, but we came to some resolution. We've been accused of not talking to anybody, not trying. It's our fault since this. People were not, even though they knew the economy had fallen, but they still were not going to accept that on this mall. This mall, they were going to use everything they could on this mall. And we knew that, and we cared. And so we spent many meetings with Mace Ridge. We have spent a great deal of time, this may be very, seemed to you very simple to put a theater and two pads at the area that it is. It wasn't. It's costing Mace Ridge more money to do this. It took a long time for them to come to the table, to realize the importance it was to our community. And all of us know that because we have been through this all year long with the letters and the telephone calls and the innuendos and everything else we've had with this. But we never faltered. We kept strong, and we worked through this. It may not be the solution that the public wants us to talk about today, but it is what it is. And it shows an initiative on their part, that they're sincere, that when the anchors are ready, they'll build. And the anchors are Dillard's and Macy's, and the economy has just not been there for them at this time. They are competing with online stores. It's taking a great deal of products away from them. They've had to figure out what the new retail is, and that's what they're all doing. They're looking at the size of their buildings, they're looking at how they sell. So a new process may come out of this, you know? You may call on the telephone and order from a department store, who knows? But it's going, there's going to be a change. So there was definitely a reason. We were angry, the public's been angry. We have certainly been very vocal to them. They've been very patient at times with us, so, and we've been patient with them. So I see nothing but this is a great first step. And I venture to say the public will be happy to have a new theater in their neighborhood with maybe a couple of nice restaurants next to it. So we're looking forward to that. I do feel that Macy's and Dillard's, when they feel that they're financially ready, will come forth. And I can see them meeting earlier date than what we see here. So I want to thank city manager. I want to thank economic development. I want to thank you for all the meetings that we've had and the things that we've tried to do to make this happen. So, and Kim, thanks for your presentation as the interim economic development now. You've done a little bit for all the departments. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so where am I now? I talk so much, I have to have a vote.
Cast your vote.
Please cast your vote.
Passes 5-0.
Very good. That's done, huh? Okay, so council, let's go to information items. Any comments on places you've been, things you want to do? I'll start with Councilwoman Laura Tannen.
I'm not used to being, Bill's usually first.
I know, I know. He's not here tonight, so you get it.
There were so many events going on, I'll let other people hit some of them because I know there was a lot going on the last couple of weeks with everything. There is something for Make a Difference Day. I've got to be up in Austraia, and it was great to see a ton of kids from the Austraia High School going out and painting fire hydrants. There's probably about 40 high school students out there. And also for our Austraia Mountain Elementary, we got a bunch of us and painted the map. The teacher, the fifth grade teacher stayed out there all day with us painting the map, so it was great to see that, the kids, and also some more high school students from Desert Edge. And then I do want to thank, that night, we had the Coyotes game. The Coyotes gave tickets to all the students at Austraia and West Star, so we had a very good presence at the Coyotes game that night, which they won. And on the screen where they put the cities for the Arizona Coyotes, Goodyear shows right up there, and I was very happy to see that.
Nice, good. Vice Mayor?
Just, I was part of a, well, I mean, on the Make a Difference, Make a Difference. I mean, we were all there, so we were at the kickoff. But I also want to talk about being a fellow rider this weekend. I got to be part of a large group, over 500 motorcycles on a fundraiser for breast cancer. And I haven't got the final totals, but I think somewhere between 20 and 50,000, I bet you that, that raised. Saw a lot of interesting people, all dressed up in pink, guys as well. It was a nice ride, some of it here over here on the west side, and it was all for a good cause and a lot of fun, so.
You're not going to tell the title, so that's.
No, I can't tie the whole thing, but that's probably a good thing.
That's why we're smiling.
Yeah, I know you were smiling, so, again, had a great time.
Next, go ahead, Councilman Holman.
The event I'd like to comment on that was great fun, and to compliment the recreation department was the event, the Fall Fest on Saturday night. It was, I don't know, I haven't heard, I tried to get them to guesstimate about how many people were there, and I was told there was no way to guesstimate. So it was very crowded. That's all I could say. And I was so pleased to be asked to judge the contest, the competition for the best Halloween costumes because there, it was great joy, and I have to admit that the judges leaned toward the whole families that participated. There was a little guy dressed as a referee, and his parents were from two competing basketball teams. And I mean, the little guy was just barely walking. What joy it was to see him walk across the stage. And he did place, he didn't win, but he did place. But anyway, I just wanted to compliment, there was a lot of new things going on, there was a lot of traditional things going on, and everybody was having such a good time. So congratulations, Bruce, and your department out there, because it was awesome.
Councilman Campbell?
Thank you. I've been a little busy. I went to the Southwest Chamber Bowling Event. I didn't get to bowl because of my knee, but I had a lot of fun cheering everybody on.
You've been bowling.
Yeah, if I'd been bowling, my mayor would have killed me. I was part of the Area Agency on Aging Accreditation Team that was interviewed by the National Agency that comes in to re-accredit the Area Agency on Aging, and we are the only area agency on aging in the United States that has, that is fully accredited, which is amazing because it's, it's a long process. I attended a domestic violence event in Phoenix where it was pointed out that domestic violence has no age barriers. It doesn't matter how old or young you are, you could be a victim of domestic violence. And also at the wonderful Harvest Festival that we did, I judged at 6:00, and then Sherilyn and I judged at 7:30. So we had a lot of fun with all the kids. And our Friends of the Library had a very successful book sale. We raised $520 for the Friends of the Library, and we've already got it spent for carpet squares for storytime for the babies.
Wonderful. Great.
Thank you.
Well, that's wonderful. Well, I'm going to assume you're going to post all the things I went to last week because it was a very busy week for me, but I, and I appreciate that you were at all these events that I could not attend. That evening, I had to be at the October Fence.
Yes.
It was really a terrible thing to have to do.
I bet.
But the evening, I had to, you know, open the keg, along with the general from Luke Air Force Base. Unfortunately, the second pound, I hit his hand, so he left with an owie. But anyway, it was, it was all quite successful. It wasn't totally my fault, but it happened. And we all laughed about it. Yeah, you couldn't help but laugh about it, anyway. And I hadn't even had a beer, so I want you to know. Anyway, and then Make a Difference Day, Judy's not in here, she is, really. She does, and a fantastic job with that organization. I was at the event at the city hall, the kickoff there, and the number of churches and the scouting and the neighborhood, and they're all together, and they're all excited. And we took a big picture, so that will be in the in-focus, so that I'll be able to see the people that took part in that. But of course, what they do is, is just wonderful things for our community, so I just want to thank her. Okay, city manager, what do you have for us?
Mayor, members of the council, I have a couple of follow-up items. One is, it was brought up on the staff reports on, on some of the presentations from an historical bent to include more detail on what the vote was, not just when it was, specific to the Burger King project that came to you earlier tonight. So that's a follow-up that we'll do in our staff reports. The other is, as part of the Mace Ridge presentation, we will be bringing, having information on the infrastructure, the public infrastructure, close to $50 million worth, and more of a detail on that, what the benefits are to the community. And so those are the follow-up items I had specifically, there are other general comments we'll follow up on as well. As it relates to the Fall Festival, I magically, Councilmember Holman got some figures. The, yes, the number I have is actually 6,624 tenants, slightly down from last year. And there were 200 that went through the costume contest, so your judging was.
That's a lot.
A lot of kids that went through that. We did get media coverage on Fox 10 and also on ABC 15, primarily focused on the fill-in need program, which is a, an incredible program that, in this case, it brought in some non-perishables for families that are in need at the time of the holiday season, and there will be gifts that will be part of that program as well. And the last item on that that I had a note for is the Arts and Culture Division. The, the community art piece that they were working on will be displayed during spring training as it comes up this next season. That's on a batter and a catcher, as outlined on wood panels that were cut out, and they'll be having that on a mural as we get into the spring training season. So just a lot of activity there, a lot of activity that you've already pointed out in several areas in our, our community, and it's just a busy season for us. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Well, just to announce, the next meeting will be a CFD meeting and a work session and a regular meeting on November 10th, 2014. So no further, oh, excuse me, yes, go ahead, Councilman Holman.
I'd just like to mention one thing. On November 1st, in our various neighborhoods, we'll be having GAIN, Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods. And I would certainly encourage everybody to take advantage of that and to join their neighbors in having some fun. I understand most of them are for 10 to 1 this Saturday in their individual neighborhood parks, so that should be a lot of fun for all of us.
Thank you for mentioning it because in the past, we did that. We had them in the neighborhood parks, and then we sort of gave them a kind of a relief time to have them at the stadium. But majority of the public, neighborhoods, wanted to bring it back to their neighborhoods. So I think that's a real good sign. So we're all looking forward to that, and thank you for bringing that up. So with that, I'm going to, no further discussion.